All in order for the state for the board?
United States of America and your republic, which stands on a nation, America, universal, the reason.
I guess we're gonna start off with some character awards. Oh, pardon me, Graham? Make sure you turn off your cell phones, please.
Well, good evening. I'm gonna ask you if Connor Leeson would please come up? Connor is a second grade student in Mrs. Angles' class, and I'm going to read what she wrote to present his character education award for this month. This is Connor's first year in the Eden Central School District. He is a wonderful addition to our second grade learning family and our GLP student bodies. Connor is hardworking and dedicated to his job at school. He has many rich and varied background experiences and contributes many interesting and pertinent facts to our classroom discussions. He is always well-mannered and considerate of others, and in perspective by both his peers and other staff members. Connor is a young man of fine character, and I'm gonna also just add to that, he very much is, I have to say that he's come in, he's done announcement club, he's also worked out with other friends, and he's done great things, and he is definitely a fine example of the character traits that we are looking for here as a Raider. So congratulations to you, Connor. Thank you.
We have two character awards. We have Mrs. Conley present for one of our fifth graders.
So Mr. Colby Schroeder, please, I think I need to go over to my client. So the young man, Mrs. Maynard and I chose to receive this character award is not here just because of one particular accomplishment or one outstanding achievement. We bring him here tonight to celebrate the quality traits he exhibits each and every day. This is what makes Colby Schroeder special, worthy of a character award. When I was trying to decide what to tell you about Colby tonight, I glanced at that Eden Raiders poster hanging in my room, the one that lists the traits of the ideal Raider: respect, intolerance, appreciation, integrity, determination, empathy, responsibility, self-control. Why, those are just the words I was looking for to describe this guy. He does every assignment and tackles every task willingly, even eagerly, always making his best effort. He's always looking for personal challenges, not to bring himself glory, just to push himself. He's a faithful member of our school newspaper, The Ed News. Colby comes in an hour before school starts to write articles. He also was part of Man O' Rymo, National Novel Writing Month. This was something I'd never tried with students before, so I had no idea what a challenge it was going to become. Students set their own writing goal and had just one month to reach that target. Colby joined me for many working lunches in November to reach his target, and he was determined to get there before any other student. He found himself competing with another student who also began to write, but with furious pace. She did manage to reach the goal just before Colby, but as is typical of him, he congratulated her on meeting him, then he set up to finish his work, to finish that novel which he had so much fun writing that he actually had a waiting list for people to read it in the classroom when it was finished. His enthusiasm and humor during his project encouraged several other students to reach their writing goals. What Mrs. Maynard and I admire most about Colby is the empathy and concern he shows for fellow students. He seems to know when someone needs a kind word or a helping hand, and in his quiet way, he manages to provide the right thing to those classmates. He treats everyone in our class as a friend. Colby was one of only two fifth grade students to get a speaking part in our musical, but when the cast list was posted, he didn't boast. He instead congratulated everyone else who got a part, and here again, Colby showed his responsibility coming to dress rehearsal, though he was not feeling very well that day, because he didn't want to let us down. John Rosman, a noted child psychologist, recently wrote an article listing the qualities of a truly terrific kid. "Tragic kids," he wrote, "obey without complaining or nagging, can be trusted to do the right thing, always give their best effort, and show respect for authority for their peers and for themselves." Colby definitely missed the criteria of a terrific kid. Now, don't get me wrong, he definitely has a playful side. If we gave him what a character award, he would still be our choice. He's the best kind of leader to have in a classroom. He sets a great example every day, yet he does so with joy and humor that every one of his class respects him. Congratulations, buddy.
Ms. Quoz cannot be here tonight. Ms. Quoz is a third grade teacher, new to Eden Elementary from GLP, as is the student, one of her third graders. Max Priceall, come on up here. Maxwell Priceall. Max is a dedicated student who shows a great enthusiasm for learning. He pays attention during lessons and often raises his hand to contribute his thoughts in class. He searches out students who might need help because he enjoys helping others. He also shows a great dedication to recycling materials to help take care of our earth, often using his creativity to convert these materials into something else. Max follows the school rules and is always prepared for class. Whenever I get a nomination for a character award, I send it out to the other teachers as well, Mr. Vona, Ms. Zoll, Mrs. McGonigkey, Mrs. Schnaffer, and Mr. Whitman, the special area teachers, who talked about his hard work in class, his willingness to do his best, and his willingness, again, to help others. So our character award, third grade, Maxwell Priceall. And if we could be excused, we're gonna go take a picture of our three character award students. I'll get you back.
Cam.
Request to withdraw specific item from consensus item. Okay, approval of consensus items. Motion that the following consensus items be approved is listed in the administrative memorandum.
A through B?
A through E? G through K?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, F. Approval of budget transfers in excess of $10,000. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the budget transfers in excess of $10,000 be approved is presented.
Second.
Question I have is this is transferring an allocation of part of the salaries over transportation for BOCs either, or my hats.
It generates additional transportation.
How can we actually legally do that?
Because they are performing a certain percentage of their time doing transportation duties. We've got auditors to show this company knowing it should be done anywhere in the city.
Is it all non-transportation office staff? The auditors say it's good. Uh, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just down to our public.
Public gets away.
We're down there very quickly, so if anyone who has, let's take two minutes to come say something about anything. They have to have you. Please state your name and your affiliation.
Attorney, my name is Trevor Howard. I am a valid taxpayer, staff member here, but I'm also the president for the CSA union, which is for the support staff in the district. And I'm pleased to see that there was a recommendation to fill the vacant bicycle position on the agenda tonight. As you recall, I questioned filling vacant positions, and this position has been filled by a substitute from August until April 1st. Contractual agreements make it no longer a risk. Bicycle cleaning staff with Mr. Martin, and they've restructured their routines to give as little impact on the quality of their existing work mode while taking out the additional duties of a paid power physician. Being a person short makes it hard to complete what they already have to do, and when the extra eight hours are put on, something's gotta do. It appears that, if it appears that items are not being attended to adequately, it's not due to any unclimb and unwillingness, but in theory, reality is, it's not as possible to do this to the same degree as they did in the past. With summer fast approaching, those who work twelve months see just how hard it is to complete the summer heavy duty cleaning. Every year we come down to the wire to get things done, of course, we're here to see. Being a cleaner short, I guarantee we'll be left undone. Cleaning is crucial health and safety issue, and I hope that you will approve without reservation or hesitation filling the position. I also wish to say I was disheartened to see a .3 FTE clerical position cut in draft four. I guess we had all hoped that no positions would be cut. Maintenance support staff levels, weather gets cleaners, bus drivers and attendants, mechanics, laborers, buildings and grounds personnel, clerical, teacher aides, occupational therapists, physical therapists, nurse, and technical support. Those positions are critical to running a high-quality school district. I sincerely hope that there are no other support standing cuts or decisions to leave any of these positions vacant once, you know, unbilled, once they become vacant. And I hope that you seriously consider not putting anyone in support staff. Thank you.
Anyone else? I was trying to figure out if you're covered. Looking for a better seat?
Maybe a little bit of both. My name's Eric Cooper. I am a teacher here, a coach, a advisor for the senior class. I'm a resident, lifelong resident of Eden, went to school here, so on and so forth. One of the things that I wanted to make a comment on, seems like many of the districts are doing, and one thing that I think the board has put to rest at this point is retirement incentive. I have absolutely no stake in it. The idea is, and it was a question and answer session on 31st, that a retirement incentive would save a district $4,000 per teacher. I've since been told by the people who put together the incentive that that is not correct. $10,000 per teacher would be the savings. You, as a board, have made a comment that you do not want to give up the experience of those teachers. Every teacher that you have in this district started off as a day one teacher at some point and build their experience. There is a tremendous number of experienced teachers out there with the cuts that have been made locally. There's no reason why this should not be given a full assessment, absolutely none whatsoever. Another district recently, just in the past couple of days, I believe it was Frontier, put together something with their association. They're looking at every possible aspect to save money for the district. We've looked at a lot of aspects here. We've gone over a lot of budgets. We're on the fourth proposal now, I believe. There's no reason why we can't look at something like this, okay? I had a private conversation with one of the board members who told me we're not giving teachers one red cent extra than what they've earned. If that's the sentiment of the board, we're not truly looking at all the places we can save money. Thank you.
Anyone else? On with new business comments.
Resignations. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of school nurse Diane Trippi be accepted effective June 21st, 2012. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Trippi for her year of service to the district.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Appointments. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Barbara Baker be appointed as a cleaner effective April 18th, 2012. Salary is based upon CSA contract level one, step one.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, approved. 2012, 2013 BOCs service commitments. Motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2012, 2013 commitment for BOCs services be approved is presented. Second.
Discussion. Uh, the only question I have is, they said all the pricing, we have no control over that, right? So it's pretty much equally.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, adapt BOCs administrative budget. Motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District, at a public meeting held on today's date, hereby adapts a resolution approving the 2012, 2013 tentative BOCs administrative budget in the amount of $2,852,064.
Second.
Discussion? I have a question. I'm trying to understand, what is the administrative budget? Why is...
If they're administrative line, we have to approve.
That's the one line item within the commitment?
Well, if within their own budget and it becomes part of the...
And what if we don't approve the administrative part?
It's a vote of the entire BOCs, so they have to by law pass this portion of their budget, other components. Either way, it's a vote of all twenty each.
Well, we can approve the service commitments, I'll approve the administrative part. The administrative part is just BOCs administration?
Administrative costs.
So those are not our costs?
No, those are the costs to buy from you.
So what happens if the district's all voted out?
They have to go back, probably, and rework their administrative line. I don't really know.
Could it be BOCs stuff to a more extreme? That's gonna get us... Our, what was our portion of that? Is it the first, well, the higher first thing on the list?
Yeah.
121.5. So our administrative part's 121.
Correct. So is that also eligible?
Yeah, it's a mandated expense. They have to go down that portion of their budget and they divide it.
Is that also eligible, that portion?
Do we have any history on the numbers, Ben?
Um, as far as the overall budget number, I don't have anything. I know that for example, last year it was 119 as opposed to 121. It hasn't changed. 114, 119, 121.
Just a few.
Yeah, I believe two years ago, I don't know if I remember the exact number, but it was right around 114. Last year was the year that we were in, right now is 119, and then this is 121.
And actually, um...
So, yeah, we don't have any.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item E, this is to cast votes for the BOCs Board of Education. Motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District, cast one vote for four of the following candidates for the BOCs Board of Education: Dr. Anne Erlich, Mr. Gary Delilis, Mrs. Nancy Rankins, Mrs. Nancy Stapp.
Those are the four you're casting the votes for. No other?
There's no other, yeah. So you can vote, I mean, you really can vote for it, and you don't have to, you don't have to vote for it.
All in favor of those four?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item F, approve accessing of computer equipment. Motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, computer and other equipment as presented be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems necessary.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
G, approve accessing of athletic equipment. Motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following items be declared excess and disposed of as the district deems necessary: 15-foot ball helmets, 20 face masks, five softball helmets, softball helmets.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item H, approve budget increase. Motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2011, 2012 budget be increased by $70.94 to $26,180,668.74 to account for increased revenues.
Second. Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we have, well, one, yeah, we'll send that, just to talk about the proposal that she, that we had sent out to our test, and they have to copy off of it. Just to explain that to everyone, see what we want to do.
Good evening. I think you all received the proposal earlier in the board packet. I uploaded the copy here. And again, it's kind of short, so mostly if you have questions. Our original wireless project came in in 2005. It was part of our telephone project, and we only have approximately seventeen units spread out across the district. We quickly found out that was not enough. We had very poor coverage. These are individual switches that are just, they work just as an individual unit. They aren't next to any kind of wireless network. So for the last few years, I've been asking BOCs to give me quotes on what a new system would cost. And it's always come in around $44,000 with $5,000 or so for installation or whatever, and it always seems like that's a little bit too high for us to put into our budget. So I've just kind of sat on it truthfully. The proposal itself came in because I actually had an opportunity to come across my desk that Pine Valley has upgraded and basically put in a new system and taken out the system that I've been having voted to us. It's not quite as many switches. It's only 59 compared to the 70 that they've recommended to us. But considering they're offering it to us for $5,000, it just seemed like, at least I needed to ask. BOCs still said it would cost $5,000 to install it. They primarily think the new 59 switches would be for the elementary school and the high school, take the existing seventeen switches and focus them all into the GLP, so they would be beefed up also. They just wouldn't be managed switches, which again, the advantage of having the managed switches is being able to control them from one location. But also, right now, if I have a guest speaker come in for a visitation or a student that needs to use their computer or whatever, our network is closed down, and we have to go through quite a process to put it into our DHCP, and, you know, hook in the MAM address. Once we have this technology unit has a controller, we'd be able to sign in, you know, they'd call us and we'd say, yeah, sign in with this password. We'd be able to log in, and it would give us a lot more flexibility for growing forward, which is, uh, the hot topic right now is bring your own device to school on something you might want to look at in the future, on the students that want, uh, the ones that want to come to school. So again, it just seemed like a good time to put this forward, since it was such a...
I have a question.
Sure, sure.
Is it the same model that they voted out, and why would high press be deinstalling and upgrading the system?
They just wanted to go to a better unit as far as the speed and faster. I have to admit that this is a little bit slower than what's the newest out there.
Okay, so it's an older unit?
Yeah.
Also, Nordeel is a owner of the business, and being supported by, by...
Yes, so if they buy, we put on their contracts, so we would be able to have that, that warranty.
And was Pine Valley putting in, doing that part of the project?
I, I'm not sure, but I just know that, I just know that they, they got some money and they wanted to go, you know, a little bit better again. It was still such a good system, but they offered it to us.
Helms?
You know, I'm not sure. I didn't check the end of life. They don't come to end of life in another two years. So I know that, you know, they're maybe a little after five years after that, so, you know, we've got at least seven years of, of good life with the system.
If we conducted a study in performance management, we'd be able to take this, that, and the other. Being in the technology sector, Nordeel is not one of those developed own companies to do wireless. So I would have some concern. It's a great price, don't get me wrong.
Right, oh, I know, I know.
It's a great offer, from a price perspective, but also, it's, it's unmanageable, and it's more problems than it's worth. There's no reason they're getting rid of it. It would have some concerns.
I was assured, extremely, my two BOCs seniors brought this to me because they heard about it, and, and they were, they'd actually quoted the same equipment to me for the last three years. They, they just feel confident that we would be, you know, happy with this. The reason we would have to pull out the existing seventeen switches and put them in just the GLP is because we currently have Cisco. So they wouldn't work together. Again, I'm gonna kind of trust on them that that's what they've been quoting us. They said, again, it was mostly just a speed, an ability to go through, you know, a faster system. Again, maybe they have the money for the project, that we would find a distance. They would also stand behind if they install it, if they would do all the programming, the switches, and that force to, so...
Do we know the performance of that? I hate to get technical.
That's okay.
But the performance of the devices to say next year, when there's new technology comes out that has a new wireless adapter, they'll plug it through a network because it's, you can't do that. They, they said that it would happen, but it could be here down the road.
Right, um, actually, BOCs, BOCs tech that specializes in the sister, uh, Katina, uh, he did say that I would have to buy the same units if I wanted to expand. So, and again, I've got two years to buy those same models.
Yeah, and not worried about the units, I'm worried about someone coming in with a new Apple box, and, you know, warlock, same fire, the same system, it's an outdated model.
Um, no, because I know that one of the concerns I had was with the market exams coming and possibility being able, again, one of the reasons I was first used to have more wireless is we need to put all the kids into the cafeteria. They assured me that we would be able to do that, so we'd be able to, you know, to work with those devices itself. That's, you're telling me.
How much wireless do we actually need in the GLP though?
Um, moving off seventeen over there would, would do it. It would be fine.
Well, how many, how many applications or uses are there actually for, needs for wireless applications there?
Well, GLP, and they're probably gonna cheer when I say this, right now, they can't really get the wireless mobile carts that the other two buildings can get because I've only got one drop in their rooms, and to bring in the wireless units, I have to unplug their phones, which is not a state of the art. So they're gonna cheer right now when I say this. So being able to put that over there allows them to use more of our, we have in the district, we've got, you know, eight wireless carts that they can be able to use, but they're not being able to use right now because I don't, they don't have that capability. So that would give them the ability to use the mobile computer labs. Or are we envisioning that this would be funded out this year or budgeted for next?
I'm assuming funded out this year.
Would you need to have an answer, please?
Um, Pine Valley's hoping, so, I mean, they don't have anybody else. They offered to us first because they know that we're looking, so probably have to.
I think they're going to wait until the board, the board can announce it.
Oh, I think so, yeah, probably, yeah.
Seven, seven?
I told them I was presenting tonight, so they, they know we're really talking about it.
Seven, double?
Yeah.
No, we can just send it to the staff, so model number?
Sure. Just forward, follow.
Thanks, Senator. Um, Lisa's report, I, I don't have anything, um, submitted those evening, um, I want to add a couple right there.
Okay, four individuals turned in petitions to become members of the board of ed. And their order in which they will appear on the ballot is Scott Anderson, Michael M. Burns, Barbara Henry, and Robert J. Reed. This is just a piece of information, we do need to rebid our student service contract this year because of new regulations implemented by the US Department of Agriculture. We have to now use what's called nutrient standard menu planning in order to plan our menus. This provides a minimum number of servings of fruits, vegetables, grains, meats, meat alternatives based on grade levels. There's also a calorie range and sodium range. Each meal must fall within for, um, comparing through the three, six through eight, and nine through twelve. We do anticipate that these changes will increase across the providing meals for our schools. We're waiting for the State Education Department to finalize the contract templates so we can begin the process.
When does that need to be done by?
Well, it's for next, next year. Hopefully, we get it in place for July first, and definitely has to be in place by September first.
Are they going to notify, I mean, I know it's been a paper, a lot of late about some of the E products that's all pink lined, and we utilize that here a little?
Yeah. That's all I have.
As soon as we get the guidelines from, uh, from today, we can work on, do some of the bits. So that's all, yeah.
I talked about budget stuff, yeah. Well, so far, if you look at how far we've gotten, um, we've done a pretty good job of pretty much preserving all the progress on the impacts, I think, at all. We do still have a, I think the last numbers count, seven hundred and seventy thousand budget gap. And so, um, I mean, we have some reserves that, that, that would be gap. The, um, I did, I, I did, or we did the last meeting, asking to look at some of the administrative cost reductions, so I know you've done some work on that. I think the, the one thing we talked about last, the first was to go through the line items and talk about where we think there's still some opportunities around, um, some areas. So, I guess what I'd like to do with you guys, okay with this, go through the line items and talk about if there's some other opportunities? I need some clarification on the line items too, I'm not even sure what they are, so... Alan, you good? I guess the first one is the board education area. First question is the fifty thousand dollars that we, we added back for teaching supplies.
We just needed to get it, we just needed to get it into the budget draft and not, didn't have the time to go back and analyze the budget exactly what we cut from where. So that, that will be the first transferred out there. Um, we just, we just needed to, to be able to get it in the draft forth.
If you were to use the line items in the back that said supplies for the different departments and incorporate that out into those same numbers, would that be about correct?
No, each department was, was different in regards to, uh, what, what they reduced and how much they reduced. I think the total, the total, um, overall amount was about twenty-six thousand dollars, um, with, you know, some additional, um, uh, supplies and, um, between other areas like special education and those kind of things, and instructional supplies that we used. So we'd like to take a look at all of those, making sure that everybody gets their, um, at least back, at least back to the levels of where they were at last year first.
Okay, I'd like to see what those, what those...
Yeah, we'll wait for, once we do that, we'll run that for you, we just want to make sure we got fifty thousand dollars in the budget.
The other thing I think is Lisa's just reported, we have three board members, so if that and the, uh, conference I wrote that two thousand dollar thing, the board member training line.
Conference line?
Yeah, conference trains.
You want to go from three to, yeah, three to five, you want to?
Yes.
Especially with the three and four hundred.
We dropped the, uh...
Six classes.
Well, we dropped the...
Yeah, and that cost, it belonged.
Here it comes.
We actually, um, because we belong to, um, we're involved in planning and location services, you kind of still participate in the training and talk.
Okay, even better.
Yeah, I saw that on...
Okay, thank you.
That's good.
Okay, 'cause I, I looked at the NISBA offerings to see if they would cover us. I know the new board members need twelve, twelve hours, six of them are fourth and six are, um, just more of the general governance, uh, training. And they didn't offer the governance training other than anthem. So that would, I think, if we could do a three, three-one, I think that's...
They didn't offer the, uh, the other one?
That only fourth, um, well, they, they offered both. Fourth was the only one that was offered online, they're trying to do governance, but not...
Um, we have a miscellaneous line item here, five hundred dollars. Uh, I'm not sure what's in there, they'll be a miscellaneous. If, I have to say if it's the fruit baskets and the, and the cookies, things like that, we could do without that.
No, I think, and again, I, Lisa can go back and look at the detail. I think it's, you know, things that maybe, uh, have been, um, purchased at, at conferences, those kinds of things. I, I'm surmising that as well as, uh, uh, maybe supplies for, for the, let's let her look at it, for the detail.
Do you need your law books, or anything like that?
That, actually, yeah, law books, those, we actually put that into, for example, and those are put into, into the articles and that won't cover the hundred dollars that's up there, won't cover the new board members. So that they're, those folks are now running at sixty-five dollars a piece. Okay, remember this, so that you, that way, okay. So you, so you want to, so that's a reduction of two hundred dollars?
Didn't wish any of them here, so...
This year, um, we have, we have, we're paying out a little bit, you can run, Alan, can I say what was coming out? All this.
Oh, for the ads?
Yeah, for the ads.
Thousand twenty?
Well, we paid two hundred and fifty-nine dollars to date. So each time we're sending it, it's twenty-eight dollars.
Maybe you want to leave that, maybe you want to leave that alone?
Um, the other thing I'd like to do is, I know we had a final resolution, I'd like to put, uh, put one in for those, there's two studies that we're looking at, one on scheduling, one around, um, basically optimal administrative structures.
Actually, with the fund balance projections, I've taken sixty-five hundred dollars into consideration this, this year.
So you're, you're helping out, so she hasn't, so we're gonna, you know, fund balance number, she hasn't included, she hasn't included that five, so, 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 uh...
So that's a physical company there?
Right.
Or can, if, you know, if I'm going to give a vendor and whatever, if you have the comfort of that, it's very... Someone's the other guy?
Well, there's about ten thousand, two studies.
Add another forty-five hundred dollars?
Thirty-five, sixty-five.
Thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred, we'll add, add to, uh, the board line. Have to put it in the miscellaneous for now, yeah.
The district board line item, twelve hundred dollars for that. Probably told that we do have district board expenses, at least the district board, she says, she's her business.
Um, I believe Barbara's paid for her time, which is here.
How do they, when I'm testing, that's a, uh...
Twelve hundred dollars for here?
Typically less than that, and, you know...
About a thousand and nine, nine forty-one?
Nine forty-one.
Ten, again, ten, ten, eleven.
Wait, wait, restructure that? Do we have to work through, um, you know, work it off the podcast or recordings or something like that? Unless we use, there's detailed notes we have.
So you're suggesting that, um, Barbara would then transcribe the, the podcast?
I just would be concerned that somebody's here to do the recordings and, uh, and taking minutes, I think, and Barbara helps with this, but she's, she's using, um, recordings as well as her notes to make sure that she gets it put right.
And I have done recordings from Barbara's experience.
And they're not as, and they're not as, you know, and the recordings aren't always clear as, you know, I would, I would be concerned about...
Anybody else have thoughts on that? I'd like to, I'd like to use that mine. Or is, any thoughts spoken?
See the past two years trending seven, thirty, thirty, oh, nine, forty-one? We can strip some of the money out of that.
Just take it down to, like, eight hundred or something like that? Anybody else?
Got my nice sense.
Alan?
Well, last year was nine forty-one, so why you take that to nine fifty? What do you say?
Nine fifty, good.
All right.
I marked up somebody's thing myself, so they'll say, "Why didn't they want to talk about?" Feel free to... Moving down, just for a meeting, anybody?
I was going to say, we'll notice this, but it looks like it's already been brought in line with our expenses, so I think we're all, I think we're okay there.
And please, um, if we need to vote next year, you can maybe get enough funding. You know, if, if, um, the budget failed, I think you might have to put it on again, or if you might have voted on it, like, on project.
The way you have numbers right now, you think?
Correct.
Um, we're moving into, um, full illustration, the non-certified salary.
Those were, uh, if I remember correctly, we took all of those and combined all of those, all the stipends into their, into their salary, salary agreements, those are, that is, we sort of represents a reduction in, um, uh, extra class stipends and, um, uh, other stipends in the budget, but they were budgeted elsewhere. So they moved them all into, all into this one line and we did the salary agreements this year.
Why is it, I guess, my point, I didn't ask for a question, why is it one percent increase?
Because it, it came from other places. Number, that number really, um, that absolutely represents no increase in salary for, for those, um, non-certified staff, those two non-certified staff. Those, that's money that we moved, it's extra this year, um, from other places.
In eleven, twelve, it's budgeted in, like, three or four different spots.
So we just...
So there's going to be a reduction in those three or four other spots while it increases here?
Because we, we included and reduced and eliminated all of those stipends and moved it into one, one place in the, in the salary agreements.
So there, there's stipends for the department chairs?
No, those are, these are stipends that, that were in, um, for, um, the other, other, uh, things that they, they were doing.
If you turn page and then look at public information, a fourteen eighty-one fifty, or eighteen eighteen budget, there is a piece of increase.
So what are the stipends for?
Some of it, the stipend, the stipends that we included were, um, uh, yeah, things like new continuing ad, newsletter, those kind of things that were, that were paid additionally, um, through the extra class, uh, uh, fund. And then we, that we had opened those up to others, uh, and then moved them into, uh, into this realm and we combined those, and we combined, um, we'll put the one, um, one salary agreement and in fact, we didn't want to do any, any stipends ever further. So those actually, as Lisa just said, they came from, um, two or three different places in the budget, uh, but that line actually represents from, um, this year to next year represents a zero increase in salary.
So that, that would, that reduction would be reflected under teaching special schools, where you have...
No, we're, we're, that was ended under, under extra class, um, public relations, and... Twenty-three thirty percent.
Seven twenty-three thirty.
Twenty-three thirty, or seven twenty-three thirty, and in the, um...
Twenty-eight fifty may show an increase because of...
Well, yeah, probably, 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 but, but, yeah.
Uh, moving down the list, periodicals, I think we could take that down to a hundred dollars, you know, those kind of members. So you think of advertising, you could take that down to one thousand, take that...
I'm a bit concerned about advertising in that that's, uh, that's, um, again, depending on the year and whether we're advertising, uh, we're talking about one, one added to Buffalo News for teaching staff is over five hundred dollars, so, um, I mean, it's seven and a half, uh...
I think, the concern is, a lot of these numbers are budgeting for all kinds of continuous season, but we need to budget for...
But ultimately, we, we, if we need to hire teachers and we don't have any money for the advertising expense or substitutes, um, there's no money to, there's no money to advertise. And we've been asked, you know, to make sure that we get those out, those, those, um, pub, out in, in publications so that we can get the, uh, the greatest pool that we can get. So, um, you know, we, we did, we did reduce it, um, I mean, certainly we can, we can, you know, go ahead and, and look at it, but if you look back in, um, ten, eleven, we spent, uh, eighteen hundred dollars in advertisements.
Probably, looks like five hundred two years ago.
Five hundred last year.
We just spent over eight hundred this year.
Okay, so it's still four thousand, so to track the historical numbers and that's what I'm going on for most of this stuff, it would show that we should be able to live under the thousand.
Correct.
Yeah, same thing, and it looks like just over a hundred for this year.
So let's make that one, that line a thousand. And next item, like, just like you're tightening up everywhere, like, tighten up some of the conference traffic lines and make the next line two thousand.
Again, I, you know, to, to cut that back, we're looking at adding, that, that amount covers, um, you know, the, um, the conferences and then, and again, some key, uh, uh, trips to, uh, Albany in regards to, uh, keeping us, keeping us current, so working us by, you know, we want to cut that. And, uh, we certainly, we certainly have, uh, have maintained conferences, um, throughout the, throughout the budget because of all of the new, uh, requirements coming down from, from the state. Again, without, you know, knowing exactly where we're going for next year, I think this year is just that. The other ones, you talked about periodicals, one that's down to a hundred, is that what that was? Both were...
Yes.
Anybody else have any, that section? Section, uh, Business Administration. And we're, we're really, my thought is to focus and we've got a lot of feedback around maintaining programs and trying to look at administrative costs, that's kind of what my thought was going for these. And, you know, it's not pleasant to do, but it's, it helps us get closer to our, our budget target, so that's why we're focusing on every dollar we can tighten up on and manage to do as much as possible.
Again, I mean, ultimately, I mean, I don't have any problem and I certainly appreciate the fact that you've gone through it all. If you want to give us a, you know, again, a, a number of where you want to go, um, then certainly we, um, we would be more than willing to go. Again, I mean, ultimately, I mean, I don't have any problem and I certainly appreciate the fact that you've gone through it all, if you want to give us a, you know, again, a, a number of where you want to go, um, then suddenly we, um, we would be more than willing to go, go through it as, as opposed to having you take all the time to look at reducing a hundred dollars here, a hundred dollars there, but it's up to you if you want to do that.
All right, anybody have thoughts on the next section, business administration?
Looks like, uh, under clerical overtime, we've been under five hundred, um, we have a question, a thousand, wondering if we can cut that to five hundred.
Cut overtime from eight hundred to, uh, to a thousand, eight hundred? Again, our concern there would be the fact that we reduced a staff member in that department this year, so if they need to go over, we'll have to send it somewhere else.
What's the, uh, contracted services for sixty-five hundred?
Um, our army administrative fees, they administer for, for a review program, and we get contracted with a firm called P B I R X, uh, to file for Medicare parity subsidies. And we have to receive some, um, additional revenue from that.
What is it, those, those, uh, what do you think of, check part of the medical fee?
No, actually, our, uh, labor.
Yeah, and the fact that we, Omni, Omni right now, from what I understand.
That's been bit out through your.
It's a really, there is one BOCs.
So we're getting this through BOCs, or we're not going to go through?
No, we have, no, we, we, BOCs just did a, it's not a BOCs service that can be bought through BOCs, it's something we did collectively, um, for all the districts. And that is, I don't see what it is here. That was, the other one is, um, also going to be, um, down, correct?
No, actually, oh, the, the army did go down.
Supplies, just like we take any supplies down in some of the teaching areas, I think I like to see supplies come over there, make it down to a thousand. As Mr. Orville said, five hundred, six hundred, between about a thousand.
Right, just, just keep in mind, those are the things that, right, which is fine, printing, printing up checks and those kind of things is one that would come down there.
From the contract, same thing as Orville's, a hundred twenty-five, a five hundred, if you can take that down to two hundred.
Um, conference and travel, it looks like, looks like, uh, we haven't spent more than seven hundred this year, we're at a hundred and sixty-five, budgeted seventeen hundred.
Take it down to seven hundred, two thousand, ten, eleven, six, seven hundred.
Uh, I'm trying to look to see what's the exact now.
Like a hundred and sixty-five so far, seventeen, yeah, a hundred and sixty-five so far this year.
Still believe total somewhere something.
It's about seven hundred dollars each time.
Going to someone like seven hundred?
Yeah, now just making seven hundred.
Should we just hit a thousand?
What's the, uh, what's the membership for nine hundred dollars? Lower to five hundred, five hundred.
Um, that is actually a contractual thing.
Tracture is a little bit what?
Or membership and professional organization.
That's a dollar amount? That's nine hundred dollars. Um, miscellaneous, uh, just as a general budget practice, you shouldn't have miscellaneous line items, so let's just probably read those, should probably go to zero. To budget this year, so this administration, the two hundred, we take that to zero.
I have a question under, going to the next one, under auditing, non-certified salary for, for auditing, is that, is that our claims auditor?
Why, why is it thirty-six hundred versus the store of twenty-two hundred nineteen?
Because she's now agreed to let her audit additional things, such as the extra class, which we've never audited before, and trust an agency.
Can we cap that though, like, six hundred dollars extra?
That, that was, that was estimated.
That's maybe thirty-six.
Let's keep it at the extra six hundred then, and so if we take the two thousand plus six hundred, it should be about twenty-six hundred.
So if we, where do we go if it exceeds that, you know, we don't, we just have to stop auditing?
She's doing extraordinary now, right, that she had, that she was.
But, but all those, all those numbers, I mean, she is, she's got the rest of the year to go, so, um. With the extra, with the extra dollars. So the number there that's nineteen would most likely go up, I believe, this is.
Like the highest priority is the audit, yes. But with that reason, you would put a huge number there later, whatever time you want.
Well, I think the number that was presented to you when you did it was thirty, that was thirty-six hundred dollars.
Thirty-six hundred, right.
So if, if, uh, we've spent year-to-date sixteen seventy-two, we have covered eight twenty-seven, so that should be our bill for this year.
I see sixteen seventy-two, I guess.
Sixteen seventy-two and eight twenty-seven in cover, so then add into that is, is the amount that, um, to do the trust and agency and other audit functions that we added a few months ago, so.
Sixteen, and so, you're looking at thirteen, thirteen twenty-one sixty, non-certified salary, your auditing?
Well, it looks like it's twenty, it looks like we're spending twenty-five hundred now, so does the additional duties, do the additional duties add another eleven hundred?
Expenses. Nineteen oh eight, these are expenses as of, as of this date?
No, that was two years, that was.
Was that eleven?
Actually, year-to-date, um, payroll was posted at April fifth. It's eighteen thirty-one is what's been expensed so far.
And then we got eight twenty-seven in cover, so that's twenty-six and change, so does the additional, do the additional duties amount to a thousand dollars worth of time? Right.
Any other thoughts?
Twenty, twenty-six hundred, uh. Don't we, the internal audit, don't we have a contract ready for that? Do you have around over ten thousand, don't we already have that contract, or when do we get that?
It is contracted, it was, uh, we did several years ago.
Okay, I want to see how it will end.
It will be ten thousand dollars, and it depends on the additional testing and the additional areas you want to look at.
Okay, so when they first came in, the first year, the charge is fifty-two twenty-five?
That was for time. No, that wouldn't be the first year.
It was last, it was eleven twelve, ten thousand, eleven hundred.
Fifty-two twenty-five last time, which was the issue.
Well, we're still saying, there is a bank paper, there is a trust. Um, he actually, uh, claims auditor, I would like to go some down, so we're training, yeah, I don't know.
Treasure, anybody have any treasure? Text collector? Purchasing?
Yep, that's our, uh, that's purchasing agreement.
Fiscal agent fees?
Looks like we're spending under thirteen, it's like what we have budgeted is still twice what our, uh, what our biggest expense was two years ago, we spent thirteen hundred, last year a thousand, and we've budgeted twenty-six, we're doing twenty-six.
Uh, actually, this year we spent fifteen, um, which I don't know, it could be character range now.
Are there legal, any questions? Personnel? Public, was it public information? Was that such, was that such a public information service? We know printing, sorry.
Printing, mailing, mailing, something.
This calendar.
We do copy, we just look at, we do, we do copy what's said, we have a hundred copies every month.
And so can we, we have printing at twenty-three hundred here for this one, can we take that down to twenty-five hundred? Twenty-six hundred, something like that.
Again, as, as long as we, um, uh, there was, I know there was some talk about doing it differently, making sure that we had copies accessible to the community, as long as we don't want to make any more copies when we don't net, don't, just, you know, whatever.
Previous year, though, was eleven thousand printing.
Correct.
Was there a change in?
We brought it in house, we brought it in house and now post it on the website and send, and we printed, printed it in house and sent it, um, in house, opposed to going to a printer.
Twenty-six hundred we can maintain by the beginning now?
Um, and I, what was, what have we spent so far this year? Okay, okay, so you can go, yeah, that's fine.
Was it twenty-five?
Yep.
So it's got to be one and five, right, now going to twenty-five hundred.
All right, um, next section, operational plan?
I have one under substitute cleaners, considering that we just appointed a new cleaner, and we expect that, uh, those costs should be, should be substantially less.
Still have to take into account sick and vacation time, we need people to fill in, you know, if somebody's not here, the duty still has to be completed.
That's like a whole person. It was my understanding that, that there were, um, add costs this year for substitute cleaners, because that, that position was left open for considerable amount of time.
Right, but also, I mean, yeah, when you look, you look at the trends, it's, it's, it's right around, right around five thousand dollars.
We paid eighteen thousand dollars today.
Take that down about twenty?
Last year we paid over twenty.
I mean, so, well, it's not managing it too.
Any year before, we'd get almost thirty.
But then, and then, it, it, it's a lot of their, they, they don't take, uh, they don't take, need to take sick time or, uh, don't use up their, 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 their.
Can we, can we do twenty? It's about what was spent this year, we can have it here.
How much is that issue?
Probably not, we're not going to wait, I think, and we, and we use it more, we get it, we get it. Here's the money.
So far, we've spent almost ten thousand dollars, I know she just got another bill, and I don't know what that.
Believe it, we, I believe we reduced this and then, uh, got some additional costs.
Uh, what, what's, what's, three times, store on the person? Any else on operational plan?
Yep. What about the equipment contracts last rep, we've spent eighty dollars the past two years, but.
That, that's there for, um, assuming for replacement, um, of equipment and repairs of equipment, that, that's. Copy equipment.
That's for, uh, repair contract, or it's a, actual repairs?
Next.
So that's, that's not covered under the next one, maintenance of plant?
No. The aberration of plant, it will be repairs to forest rubbers, um, you know, painting, equipment, so they may have, the aberration of plant, or the maintenance of plant is, if I can be, what, the outdoors around.
Operation plan is smaller, you want it?
Mm-hmm.
Again, keep in mind, I mean, and I realize we're trying to reduce, but if it's there and.